All right, we'll call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. And I'll ask anyone who would like to, to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation on her own, in its full, complete, and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll now start with our roll call and conflict of interest check, and I'll start with trustee Sakenga. Trustee Sanders?
Here.
Clerk Stambo Lellis.
Here.
I still messed it up. Clerk Stambo Lellis. I've been practicing. I told Michelle, she asked me if I was nervous for my first meeting. Told her the only thing I was nervous about is I've been practicing her name for a week, and I still did it wrong. Treasurer Metz.
Present.
Trustee Abbott.
Present.
Trustee Nolte. And any conflict of interest? All right, hearing none. We'll move into approval of the agenda, and I do have a few amendments to the agenda. I would like to remove from the consent agenda letter E and make that action item D. That is the FASB request for expenditure for appraisal. And also to move discussion item B to become action item E. And that is the discussion of the DAFTI project update and reimbursement. Are there any other amendments to the agenda? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved. Seconded.
Moved by Sakenga, seconded by Abbott. Is there any discussion? I'll just give the reason for the amendments I'm asking for. From the, to remove the FASB requests for the appraisal to the, from the consent agenda. Essentially, we have started a new process to make sure that the township is reviewing the properties that the FASB board is interested in to provide any additional information that they can. And so I would still like to request later the expenditure for that appraisal, but pending that approval from the township review. So that any of the issues that were, that may be identified there can be remedied before that appraisal would take place. And the second is to move from a discussion item to an action item, the DAFTI reimbursement. And that's simply because that is a reimbursement that they need before the end of the year. So moving it to an action item instead of just discussion. It is, I do want to say, we are doing our best as this new board to follow the process that the previous supervisor laid out where our, we will do a three-touch system on most of our business. So we will be able to discuss it multiple times before asking the board to take action on it so that no one is surprised by any of the things that we're bringing forward. And I do apologize that that, the DAFTI request there and as well as one other under the action items, which is the change or potential change to the personnel manual, don't follow that system. So I'm just letting everyone know that. Any other comments on the agenda? Hearing none. We'll move into a vote. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously. And now we've made it to our call for public comment on agenda items. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on items on the agenda this evening? Seeing no one moving to the microphone, we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? As amended.
I'll make the motion to approve it as amended. I can second it.
Moved by Nolte, seconded by Sanders. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. And we'll move into action items. Our first action item is discussion and approval of the personnel manual change. That's on page 24 of your packet. A little bit of background here is the current policy as listed in the personnel manual is that there is no payout for PTO. Essentially, what has been happening is PTO has still been being accrued. And, and folks were sort of out of alignment with the personnel policy. After meeting with the executive team about this issue, we discussed that we didn't think that it was fair to the staff that they would lose all of their accrued PTO time. And also that we should make a change to make sure that we knew what the, to clarify what the policy was moving forward. The policy, just so everyone, there's probably questions as to why the policy may not have been being followed or wasn't as clear. The policy was originally passed in 2023, late 2023, I believe it was October. And then the new board passed the revised policy as well earlier in 2024 with the personnel manual. And so we are trying with this, with this change here to bring us in line with what has been our operational standards and to also be fair to the current staff that are here that we didn't think, you know, making this change here at the last minute in December, that they would even be able to use all of their PTO if they wanted to. So proposing two changes here. First is that the board grant the exception to current staff and that their PTO balances be paid, paid out in December of 2024, which allows us to reset all of the staff PTO balances to zero. And then moving forward with the change in the personnel manual, which is, is before you today, which would allow staff to carry forward a maximum of one half of their annual accrual of PTO and states that at the end of employment, employees may be paid out for any of the PTO that they may have. Is there a, before we get to discussion, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve those changes as specified in the, in the personnel policy.
Second it.
Moved by Sakenga, seconded by Sanders, and now we'll open up for discussion.
I just want to say that I support the change. I, I think the purpose of PTO is for people to take time off. And it's good to have policies in place that, that place a limitation on how much you can accumulate. So I, I like this change and thank you for finding it. Feel kind of bad that it was in there and I didn't, I didn't notice it last year when we approved the policy.
I just want clarity, is it a year, so let's say somebody doesn't use all of it. They can carry 50% forward, but then what if they stay employed for years? Do they keep accruing it? And does that then, 50%? And then that, does that get paid out at the end? Like, let's say they stay for five years.
The way that it's, the way that it's, that's a good question, Laura. We struggled with how to word it. So the way that we were trying to thread that needle, because all of us, I think, agreed as we were talking about it that, when I say all of us, I mean, the executive committee, when we found this issue, agreed that their unlimited carry forward would pose a problem. Because, you know, that payout, if you had been here for many years, could be very, very large. And to Karen's point about folks taking their time. So the wording is intended to be that you can only carry forward half of your annual accrual. So if you are able to accrue, and there's a, there's a whole chart in the, in the manual as to, you know, how many hours you can accrue based on the type of position. If your annual total is 50 that you're allowed to accrue, you can only carry forward 25, regardless of if you carried forward 25 from the previous year. The total that you can carry forward is half of your accrual.
Okay, so it encourages people to use it.
Correct.
And going forward, I plan to send out a quarterly email reminding staff employees to use their time.
But, but just to be clear, what you just, just can I reflect back what you just said? We're not saying that you, that you, you can accumulate a half year for every year of employment. It's a half year in aggregate.
Correct.
That's all.
And it's written that way because after, for example, after three years of employment, you can accrue more than if you had only been here for two years so that, but you can still only carry forward half of that annual accrual total. Any other questions or discussion?
You answered.
I also wrote down, just so that we know what they are, we do have the actual payout amounts. So we have, and I will go by, by hour, or by numbers here. So the office administrator is $1,706.88. The deputy clerk is $1,388.75. The recording secretary is $1,754.55. The office assistant is $480. And the deputy clerk, I'm sorry, the deputy treasurer is $193.86. And that will, as we mentioned before, zero out all of it so we can start new with the new policy. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move into a vote. The, I just want to make sure we're on the right motion as well. So motion was as, is that as written, Karen? Because I have it separated into two motions. Does that work?
Yes.
Janice, is that?
Well, we'll make it two motions then.
Okay.
So I'll move the first, I, so it's page 24.
25.
So I'll, I'll move to approve the payout of current staff approved PTO in December 2024.
Okay, and that was Sakenga and Sanders. All right, so because this deals with money, I am going to do a roll call vote. So we'll start with trustee Nolte.
Yes.
Trustee Abbott.
Yes.
Treasurer Metz.
Yes.
Clerk Stambo Lellis.
Yes.
I can't roll the L. I'm never going to get it. Trustee Sanders.
Yes.
Trustee Sakenga.
Yes.
And myself, Supervisor Scott, yes. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the changes in the Dexter Township Employee Manual as presented.
Well, I'll make then the second motion to approve the changes in the Dexter Township Employee Manual as presented.
And I'll second it again.
All right, Sakenga and Sanders. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. All right, the motion carries. And we'll move into our second action item, which is acceptance of the financial transactions.
What page are we on now?
Those are on page 62.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to say here as well, we will have the variance reports that the, the previous supervisor had started. I will have that in January. Just to give you the top line numbers, 68% of the year has elapsed. And currently, if you look at the, the numbers here on this report, 59% of the general fund has been expended. If we're looking just at top line numbers. Is there a motion to approve, to accept the financial transactions?
Yes. I'll so move it.
Moved by Nolte, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Metz. Any discussion?
Yeah, I want to just clarify that 100% of the capital, that, so, so, so 59% of the operating budget has been expended and 100% of the general fund transfer to capital has been expended. So if you look at the, that's why if anybody was wondering, if anybody's looking at this report, page 64, and you see that there's a negative net of revenues and expenditures, that's because they created the, the capital fund. So you'll see in Department 965, right above that on page 64, those large transfers of capital, the 1.5 million that was transferred from the general fund to the capital fund. So it's not, it's, it sort of looks like a deficit, but it really isn't a deficit. It's literally creation of a different fund, fund code so that we could separate out capital and operating. And I'm saying this for the benefit of the new trustees that weren't here participating in that, in that decision-making. And we did that last year because that's a best practice in the world of budgeting that you want to be able to clearly see your capital expenses, which contribute to your overall assets separately from your operating expenses, which are what it costs day to day to run the organization.
Thank you. Any additional discussion on the financial transaction?
Thanks for answering that. That was one. The other one is the contracted services on page 62, four lines up with 569%. I'm sure that's a re, is that, I don't know what that contains to.
So that was, that was explained a few months ago, that over, over expenditure occurred several months ago.
It's coming now or?
Well, it's just that you're looking at it as, it's a different presentation. I, I don't know. I mean, you, maybe you just didn't notice it, but, but, but I explain it every month when I do that variance write-up. I explain what the variances were that month. And that was the digitization project, which was, was appropriated in fiscal '23. And then we didn't fully expense it in fiscal '23. So the expense carried forward into '24. And, and that was my error because I should have included a budget line for, for the digitization project when I realized that it, it wasn't fully expensed in the prior fiscal.
Any additional discussion or questions for the financial transactions? All right, hearing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor of accepting the financial transactions, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. We'll now move on to action item C, which is the approval of the salary range resolution. This is a continuation as well from the previous board. It's on page 70 of your packet. Is there a motion to approve the salary range resolution?
I'll make the motion to approve the salary range.
Moved by Nolte, is there a second? Seconded by Metz.
How do we know that?
Yes, do we know the resolution number?
We will. I will email the board.
Okay.
Tomorrow.
So we won't have it for this one, but we'll, I'll make sure for the future ones that we'll get them.
But as a swing of order, it isn't necessary. I mean, that, and that, I've had that advice from, from our township. So it won't invalidate the motion or the resolution, not have the resolution.
Thank you, and we will work on that for next time.
Are we going to discuss?
So we, yeah, discussion. Nolte and Metz was the second.
I just wondered why our low range for our office assistant is so low at 15. I know that that's minimum wage federally now, but it just seems like so very, very hard to survive on $15 an hour. I can't imagine.
This was, this, this was the benchmark study that I did last year, and it was based on just an analysis, taking Bureau of Labor Statistics numbers and MTA numbers. So it's merely a representation of the range of salaries in our area for these positions at the 25th percentile and the 75th percentile. We will sep, we separately approve the actual compensation for, for the people. So the, 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 the method, we could have a separate policy that sets a threat, that sets a different minimum wage. But, but the reason it's $15 an hour is because that's what the benchmark, that, that was the analytic result of, of the benchmark study that we did.
Other discussion? It is. All right, hearing none, we'll move into approval of the salary range resolution. Because it's a resolution, I believe I need to call a, a roll call vote. Is that true? Or is it?
Can I ask one question now before we go to, wasn't there one that was, had a top range that was non-incremental? You bumped up higher than? Or am I, did I misread that?
I.
Oh, I see. So, so the administrative manager moved from a salaried basis to an hourly basis. Okay, yeah, never mind that.
Just to be in line, so that the resolute, yeah.
Sorry.
No problem. Any other discussion? All right, and hearing none, we'll move into a, a vote. We'll start with trustee Sakenga.
Yes.
Trustee Sanders.
Yes.
Clerk Stambo Lellis.
Yes.
Trying. Treasurer Metz.
Yes.
Trustee Abbott.
Yes.
Trustee Nolte.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott, yes. All right, action item D is the farmland and open space board. So this will be back in your packet, page 19. This is a request for, to expend resources for the, for an appraisal on a property that the FASB board is interested in. And the only change here would be that this request, the request for expenditure for the appraisal pending the township Department of Planning and Zoning review of the property. The pricing and everything stays the same. Is there a motion?
Can you say that again? So the planning, planning hasn't reviewed this or have?
So previously, and, and this is probably, we can go over the new, the sort of new process. Previously, the, the Farmland Open Space Preservation Board had listed the properties that they were interested in. But there was no sort of formal review by the township as far as any records that the township may have about those properties. So while they were reviewing title work and all the other legal things, there was no formal review of, from the township's end. This new process is essentially that when there is interest in properties or it's a potential property that the, the Farmland Open Space Board would be discussing, they would, those are now coming to the township and the Department of Planning and Zoning is doing a very quick review of those properties to see if the township has any records. And in the instance, you know, just being, with this instance, there was something that was flagged as a question that the township is following up on. So we're, we're essentially saying we would like to have that information back before any of these funds are expended for the appraisal. And just to make sure that it's something that could move forward. And that will happen now for all of the properties so that if there are any potential issues, we may be able to catch them on our end before there's any money expended by the board, by the, the Farmland Open Space Board. Laura, did I do an okay job explaining that?
Yeah.
Greatly appreciate that you.
Yeah.
And any, Laura, as a representative to that board, is there anything that I missed that you'd want to say before we?
Oh, and, and actually, I'm transferring, our role, my role is ending with that board. And Clerk Stambo Ellis is going to be the representative on that board. So, you know, she'll be following through on that. But I just want to say that I hope that it's not, it doesn't end up to be nitpicky. Like, I think that there's, there may be issues that are like 30 some years old on a property that have not, you know, that haven't been necessarily resolved, but may not be necessary to resolve. So I just hope it's not used as a way of, you know, standing, I, I just hope it doesn't stand in our way of, you know, I think we should try to clear the way as much as possible to preserve farmland.
Will the, will the board receive any written notification from the planning committee? If there is issues or not issues, will we get clearance or are we just to?
Well, they, and if you read the, I urge everybody to read carefully the report from the planning department every month.
Oh, in the back, yeah.
It's very thorough and they tell you everything that they're doing, all of the code enforcement, all, all the action. And so they will start folding in their review of any farmland, and they will preserve the confidentiality of the sites, but you'll, you'll see it all.
That was one of my questions on this. There is a name on here. Should there be?
I, I did speak with Barry about that. And there was less concern, usually those are sent over with a notice if they need to be confidential. And we, we do try to limit that as much as possible. And I think it was probably sent over, like, it probably could have been, but there was less concern. So we didn't go back and retroactively redact it. But yes, I noticed, I noticed that as well.
I was surprised.
And actually, I think we're, we've, we've sort of jumped ahead. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second your motion.
So it's been moved by Sakenga and seconded by Nolte to approve the expenditure for appraisal pending the township review. Any further discussion?
So who found this issue? Was it our planning department or?
The issue with this property?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, it was Michael. The review under the, the new process, Michael founded and flagged it. So I think the process will.
The process is good.
Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll move into a vote. Again, I, I believe since it's a financial matter, I will do a roll call vote. Trustee Nolte.
Yes.
Trustee Abbott.
Yes.
Treasurer Metz.
Yes.
Clerk Stambo Lellis.
Yes.
Trustee Sanders.
Yes.
Trustee Sakenga.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott, yes. So the motion passes. We'll now move into action item E, which was also the amendment, which is found on page 74 of your packet. And this is the information from DAFTI. And we are essentially asking for approval of an additional expenditure of $5,185.44 for the work that was done at Station 2 for the dry hydrant that was there. Is there a motion?
Motion that we discussed.
All right, it's been moved, moved by Abbott. Is there a second?
I'll support.
Seconded by Stambo Lellis. And discussion.
So I wanted to make a point, which is even though you very kindly were deferential about this, this has been, we did, I have brought this to the board in the past, that the, that the, that the, and the basic, basically the, the, it's good news, which is that the volume of water is much higher than we were anticipating that it was going to be. And the, and one of the impacts of that is that there's a slightly higher cost for the, for, for the equipment. So the total project cost, and I'm going from memory, but I think we budgeted it at 125 and it came in at 130 or something like that, and we're asking, and I, I had talked with the chief about, there was some suggestion of, they were going to move forward with it because this is such a great service level enhancement that they, that they really wanted to be able to take advantage of this increased volume of water. But I, but I, I had said, and I think I reported to the board before, to go, to go ahead and that I would ask the board to, to fund the cost overrun because, because it's really for our benefit and it's a project that we initiated. And I think you all have heard about it before, so. And it's great news.
It's a good problem.
It's, it's, it's great news.
It's very good news.
And it's really a very, very small added cost compared to the total project.
Right, but it'll also, in the long run, save the homeowners in the area money because their homeowners insurance, they will get a discount.
That's why we went forward.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point. Any of the, any of the homeowners living in that area as, as well, of any of the dry hydrants that we have installed or are installing, once they're certified, which we're working through the process of, and you can see that update in the packet as well, will get a letter. And I've, I've asked the chief and Don to please make sure that the residents know that that the residents know that, that those projects were funded by the township, that, you know, working together with the, the department to get that because it should be a, a significant savings, I would think, um, to the residents, um, for having those installed.
Just roughly, when do we expect certification? Just. Oh, not at our leisure, huh?
Don, Don, I think we were, we changed to a new live stream system to YouTube. And I've been told that the microphone will now actually work for the people who are watching us online. So if you could come up to answer the question, uh, and turn on the mic and, um, that way everyone following along at home can also have the, the joy of hearing your answer.
Probably have to take it off the little.
Yeah, it's probably tucked in there on the side there. Green light.
Green light, great question. So ISO moves at its own process. We need to get all our documents in a row and then submit to them. And then they'll make that process, they'll make that determination. So it's a, it's a, it's a process of documentation, submittal, and then their approval. Definitely within early two thousand twenty-six or twenty-five.
Or twenty-five. First quarter, first quarter twenty-five. Thank you.
And Don, while you're at the mic, is there anything that we, that we missed about any of this? Or are there any other questions for Don?
Thank you for that, um, increase because we did, we did hit some other load of water. At that site, that station two with the well. No, any questions to me or us?
So with that, with that new dry well, um, what areas is that going to cover?
So the station two well is an actual pump and a fire hydrant like the city of Dexter. So that's an actual hydrant. Uh, the rest of them are dry hydrants that are in ponds. And that'll cover one thousand feet, the protection class is one, one thousand feet from that hydrant. Not road, but one thousand feet as the profile. So it's actually significant.
And this one, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Don, but this, the one at station two also is to fill, like, to fill the tankers and the apparatus. Is that correct?
Right.
Any additional questions or discussion?
Well, thank you.
Good.
Yeah.
Maybe just one more thing. So.
Sure.
The substation two, right? I guess that, that was more my question. What areas does that cover? I'm just curious, or, or maybe I can ask it this way. Is the increased pump size like three times this amount? Or is Dexter Township paying for the entire, but, you know, added on amount for the new pump?
So that was the Dexter Township Fire Station, Substation, and it's the Dexter Township purchase of the fire hydrant and, and the pump itself. So it's independent, like the city Dexter's water system is independent. We use it collectively, um, but the city pays for them. Dexter Township pays for that.
So we own the fire staff, he doesn't own the fire station. The fire station is owned by Dexter Township and it's a capital improvement within a property that we own.
As Webster owns their fire station and the city owns theirs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, hearing none, uh, we'll move into a vote and I'll do another roll call vote. Trustee Sakenga.
So it's a motion to support the additional cost?
Oh, we didn't, we didn't get, I need to get a motion first.
Yeah, I think we got a motion to discuss the matter, but we had a motion to discuss the matter, I think, but we didn't have a motion to approve an additional expense. Save the motion to open it up for the staff.
Yeah, so, um, okay, so we have a motion from Abbott. And I just want to be, I want to make sure, since it's money, that we do it the right way. So the motion from Abbott and a second from, from Stamboelli to approve the additional five thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty-four cents. Is that? Abbott? Yes, okay. All right, uh, now we'll take the roll call vote. Trustee Sakenga.
Yes.
Trustee Sanders.
Yes.
Clerk Stamboellis.
Yes.
Treasurer Metz.
Yes.
Trustee Abbott.
Yes.
Trustee Nolte.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott, yes, the motion carries. All right, that is all for all of our action items. We'll move into the next item on the agenda is discussion items. And the first item here is our single hauler project and draft RFP. Trustee Nolte.
We have Matt Non in the audience. Matt, if you'd like to step up to the, the mic.
Oh, sorry, uh, this is page seventy-three.
Seventy-three. Ninety pages attached digitally, to be printed. We are moving along with the single hauler. We've gone through, I'll just give you a quick update as everything goes. Back early twenty-four, we did a, a quick, we are working in conjunction with Theo Egman from Public Works, Washoe County. Matt is a consultant that Washoe County funds and we've been working on this project. Dexter Township ran the survey in early twenty-four where we had six hundred responses. And out of those six hundred responses, we had a seventy-nine point seven or so, uh, approval rating that people are looking forward to this. We held a coffee chat where approximately forty people attended and they're, they're anxious about it and they're happy for it, it seems. Things slowed down a little through the election because we didn't know what was going to happen. We're picking it back up. We've been through Dexter Township Legal has gone through the contract and that's the version that you have right now. Matt and I are still fine tuning it. There's some typos, there's some other things that just have to be cleaned up. And I went and forgot the darn update, Matt. I ran out of the house today. We've realigned the timetable that, uh, we'd like to go to get the RFP out in January of twenty-five and then the next steps, and we would go live implementation projection in August of twenty-five. And any questions that you may have on single hauler? That's what we're here for today to start.
So what would the township's role be other than securing the contractor?
That's it, you've passed an ordinance that creates the opportunity for you to go to a single hauler. It's what happens in Michigan. And then the contractor would be responsible for cart delivery, owning the carts, signing people up, taking care of all customer service. And there'd be the only pieces, you now have a contract with, now I'm forgetting the word, teeth, so that if somebody doesn't pick up something from one of the residents, there are repercussions under the contract. If they break glass and leave it on the street, there's a contractual obligation with penalties for them to fix this. And it, it brings you into just one set of trucks going through the community rather than five, six, eight, depending on.
Eight that we have now.
How many haulers. This is something that quite a few townships, cities have done. Uh, we're working with Fairfax County, Virginia. It's a million person county and they have twenty-eight different vendors crisscrossing that. And some are paying five hundred dollars and some are paying a thousand dollars. So the thought that that's a competitive market really turns out not to be true. And there's a lot of efficiencies.
Yeah.
And it remains to be seen, you'll go out to the market, you'll find out what the contractors are offering. And then it's up to the township to decide, is this a good deal for our residents or not? And so I think we're looking at an opt-in program for solid waste, recycling, and also yard waste. We've also asked to see if food waste could be part of it. There's very few sites that take food waste, so it really depends on whether the contractor can make an arrangement for that. But the survey data show.
Showed only about ten percent that were interested in food ra, uh, waste. The other thing is there will be a cost to the township, obviously, because we'll have to go through educating of the residents. There's, there's, we're going to have an education process, we're going to have mail costs, we're going to have coffee chats, we're going to have to implement and inform everybody because this is strictly an opt-in program. People can choose not to opt in. In fact, in the surveys, thirteen percent didn't want any service and that's okay. But we have to have those numbers to present to the vendors so they can anticipate what kind of numbers they're going to get. We also started the project, including Linden Township, and they are opting not to move forward with it right now. They are not, um, far enough along in educating their population and understanding what they really want. So they are following our lead, really. Letting us walk the tightrope. And if everything goes well, to come on board with the contract, so.
When you say opt-in, though, they will, they will be prohibited from selecting a different provider.
Correct.
So it's either this provider.
Or no provider.
Or you're.
You drop it off yourselves.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Which they're free to do. But there will be cost to the township. There's no way that, we're going to have implementation cost and there's going to be, you know, there's going to be bumps in the road when we implement. People are going to have tons of questions and we're going to have to put some personnel to help answer those questions and smooth things out the first quarter or so. I mean, that's just, I figure that's inevitable. But, and we really don't know if this is viable to move forward until we receive the information back from the vendors. I mean, if it comes back that it costs more, we have an average cost from our survey, we know the cost. If it comes back not good, then we don't move forward really, regretfully. But we don't know that until we go to bid.
Additional questions or discussion from the board?
So this evening, are we only gathering people of interest, RFPs? Or is this our time to say if we're forward, if we're against it, if we have questions?
You mean to the board or to the people out there?
All of the above. The board, the, the community is listening, I, I would hope.
Yes, I would hope.
Um, because this is a very serious matter. But my, that is my question, is this when I would come to the board about concerns I have? Or are we just strictly gathering?
We.
Sending out RFPs to see who has interest and then we talk about?
Well, we shared the RFP, so you would know what's going in the RFP and what is being offered, what we're seeking, so we could take comment. If you, if you differ with something that's in the RFP, I hope we hear it tonight because this is our chance to correct the RFP or to change it before we send it out next month. So yes, now is the time. For the residents, I think we've heard a lot of their input, their input has been included. We've put things in the RFP that we have heard from residents that they've asked for, such as food waste, size of containers, what else?
Dumpsters for contractors, someone was really worried we were going to take away their right to pick if they're rebuilding a house and they need to have a dumpster brought out. And that's not the case. If anything, we're actually asking for a bid price for these dumpsters that we could offer contractors working in the community that hopefully would be more cost effective for them. But it doesn't change.
Doesn't change construction.
Right.
So your next step will be to come back to us and say, this is what the bidder, this is what we found from the, from the private sector.
The next step to the board will come be back.
This is what they're willing to do, these are the services they'll provide, this is what they're going to charge our residents. This is what we're going to do with, and then, and then we can say, these are our concerns.
We'll come back with a recommend, recommendation probably of what vendor to choose based on the criteria that is laid out.
Or we can say.
Or we say, no, we don't do it. Right. Right, but we wanted to share the RFP so you could read it and if there's anything you want to change in there or add or are worried about.
Right, so there's a scope of work that we've asked for bidders to respond to. If you think there's something that's missing or should be changed, that would be good to know in the next.
Yeah.
Couple of weeks.
Exactly.
And what is the, can you just go through the, sort of the rest of the timeline then of?
Do you have it with you, Matt? I totally forgot my sheet here. No, we changed all that because that's out of date. We're, we've missed those deadlines. So we sat and we redid. It runs January and February is pre-proposal.
Right, end of January is a pre-proposal meeting.
I can't believe I, sorry, walked out of the house without.
And I, give me a second, I think it's.
On my calendar.
Close.
I could probably call it, I have my email.
Me one. I need to reconnect to my phone.
Yeah, I might be able to get it right in the email, Matt.
So you were at that time asking for township authorization in March? So I assume it's three months delayed, so it would be June instead, asking for township authorization.
Yeah, let me fill the numbers, let me.
I'm getting close.
Revise schedule. I got it, Matt.
Okay, I did too.
Okay, so, oh, go ahead.
Pre-proposal meeting, end of January, where interested bidders that had questions, we'd have a, an optional meeting, they don't have to attend it. We bumped into a situation where there was only one bidder in a, in a required meeting. So when one bidder knows they're the only bidder, you're not going to get as competitive a price. And four communities I worked with asked for a required meeting and only one bidder showed and their price went up. So submittal deadline, February seventh, um, for questions. Proposals would be due the end of February.
That basically gives us three weeks to get back to the vendors and answer all their questions.
Yep, you would use the month of March to evaluate the proposals, um, request interviews with proposers if you thought you needed that. You'd select, um, a bidder in your process in April. Introduce the, um, the recommendation, April fifteenth at your board meeting. You'd authorize it if you chose to move forward, um, May twentieth. After that, contract preparation, making sure your lawyers are all happy with the contract. The scope gets included typically as part of the contract, with the idea that transition activities would be in June and you'd begin contracted operations August first.
I'll share the chart with everybody. It moves it along. It sounds like it's been a long process. And I'd say the contract's been a long thing to work through and get everything in there that we kind of like. But now we wait and see what comes back from vendors.
This, this may be kind of a, you know, ignorant question, but how do you prevent other, that, other haulers then from coming and hauling away the thirteen percent of people who didn't want it? You know, how do you prevent other trucks from coming?
Well, are you assuming that that thirteen percent are actually having other trash services come to their house? Or could they be people who are taking it to the dump? Because they have a coffee chat where they talk trash. There were several people who said, you have several people who said that they actually take their trash to the transfer station themselves.
Percent were the thirteen percent of people that didn't want any trash service, any.
Any trash service. Okay, I'm just.
Eighty percent want trash.
Right.
Sixty-seven percent want trash and recycling. Some people may opt out of recycling and continue to take their stuff over and work near that's their choice. But there'll be a cost breakdown from vendors. So the question is, how do we stop other trucks from coming to our township?
Mm-hmm.
You know, how do you stop? I mean, it'll be self-reported. I think it'll be obvious that there'll be, should only be one kind of cart. I drove in today, um, from northern Michigan and came down Dexter Pinky Road and there were four different kinds of garbage bins on the way down. So, you know, I think it's actually going to be a little more obvious.
Okay.
They're, they're big trucks, they will see.
Yeah, I don't think a major hauler is going to haul out here for.
For one or two, yeah, I mean, that's what I was thinking.
It's a stop factor just on sheer volume.
Driving along, reporting them.
Yeah, exactly.
Because I want our roads.
Well, that's, that's the whole point, is the road.
And Hamburg Township residents started a process there for that very reason. It wasn't the township, it was residents saying, we just spent ten million dollars on roads.
Yeah, right.
Why do we have eight different vendors driving across? And the, the factor to use is, I think technically it's, uh, fourteen hundred to one, but we use a thousand to one as the damage factor of a garbage truck versus a passenger vehicle. So.
There's also been many, there's little subgroups within our community that have created these little mini single hauler neighborhoods. And in the RFP, it, it calls that we encourage the vendor to contract with those entities so they keep their, their little, like, they, they collect their fees in HOA. And so to contract with that HOA, they can contract with that HOA as the customer to service that neighborhood. It's another incorporation.
And I already asked you this, but I'll ask you this, I'll ask for the record, which is. And I already asked you this, but I'll ask you this. I'll ask for the record, which is because my, my motivation is roads. And I live on Huron River Drive, which is our heaviest used road and it is a border road. And so the residents on the other side of the street are Webster Township residents who won't be swept into this single hauler project. So we're, we spend, we've invested pretty significantly in Huron River Drive. Um, and I asked whether the Webster Township residents could opt in to, who live across the street on Huron River Drive. Can we invite them to participate in Dexter Township's night? Um, um, and, and I think McKinley also is a, is a.
Is a dual township road.
A, a heavy used border. Um, and I think your answer is yes, they can.
It's kind of like, who's going to turn down a customer right there?
You know, and I don't think we speak to that in the, uh, RFP. But we could say if there are roads that are adjacent to both another township, you know.
Yeah. It's really McKinley and Huron.
Shared road.
You would prefer, you know.
Those are two, they're very heavy use roads that we've invested in pretty significantly that are border roads. And, and, and it's going to be half as effective if we still have eight garbage trucks. You know, if we have two garbage trucks a day driving down here on River Drive.
Yeah.
I want one a week, not eight a day or whatever. I mean, I'm.
And I think as long as there are opt-in programs, there are subscription communities anyway. There shouldn't be anything, um, a problem with that.
We just want them to get, I assume that they're going to get a more favorable rate because they're participating in their program and so I.
That's the hope.
I hope there's some incentive for them.
Well, and they would have to be informed maybe through a different mail list or something.
Yeah.
Um, any other additional, I want to bring us back to our, uh, our RFP and questions. Um, or any questions around the timeline?
There is a question for this RFP, so I, I.
Oh, you want an answer? I'm sorry. That was.
Well, if it needs to be, if it needs, if the RFP needs to be edited to ensure that these neighboring people can.
These two neighboring roads?
Yes.
We could put a little sub note in there.
We can put that in that there's a, you know, an interest on the part of the township in, um, offering this to. Non-t township residents.
Share.
Ordering shared roads in the community.
And it's really just those two roads. Huron River Drive and McKinley. I can't think of anywhere else.
And we can name those.
Yeah, we can name those two roads.
Yeah.
Do you know how many potential bidders are interested or have?
We don't yet, and it's kind of constantly changing with vendors coming in and out.
So are we seeking these RFPs or are we going to send them to?
We're going to send them directly to.
For them to.
Yeah, this isn't. Theo at the county, they've done this already. They just recently did this with one of the regional authorities that they have. There's two regional authorities in the county. Um, so there are a list of vendors that we know are working in the county. And we will reach out to them directly.
And my big issue is recycling. Because I do know for a fact, there are two waste management companies that are just picking them both up at the same time. And they're just taking them right to the landfill.
Right. Um, and so what this gives you is the teeth that it literally says. Recycling may not be commingled with solid waste. That is against the contract.
It also takes all our recyclables over to WWRA.
That would be a serious condition for me.
Right.
This contract says.
Yeah, and that's where having your own contract makes a big difference. I'll, uh, there was a community in Downriver that had a recycling contract with their vendor. And it did not require them to take that material to a recycling facility for processing. So when the market went upside down, their vendor, because they weren't required to, started throwing out all their recycling in the landfill. Um, this contract gives you the teeth, I think, to better build trust with residents that this material is being handled appropriately.
And that's what I want to do is I want to do right by our community.
Absolutely.
But when I, and I live on a rural road as well as I believe the majority of us do. And I know one has to access a rural road to get to his, so. But then again, I think on the flip coin of that, where we're 40% rural roads. And as a person that understands rural living, we're not city where it's dominantly, you know, paved roads. Whoever your commissioner, commission is, what we are, um, the Washtenaw County Road Commission, they're out there all hours of the night. They're cleaning those roads. They're making them safe. The garbage trucks can get out. And it's, it's a dense populated area when it comes to city, where in the rural, you know, they, people can be far. You know, from each other and our back roads can be very slick, especially because they've been redone. Which I have no complaints about that. But now we could have very frustrated. A very frustrated community if their garbage isn't picked up because now we've said, hey, this is your new supplier. This is who you have to utilize or you can, um, get rid of your garbage yourself. But then my concern is we don't have a Department of Public Works or a Utilities Department. People are going to call the township regardless. So that's one concern I have. As well as what does the dump look like? I mean, it's, what is there possibly four or five years until, I mean, I assume everyone is utilizing the, the Salem Township dump?
Harbor Hills landfill?
It's, it's out by Chubb Road. I mean, I believe that's where the majority of Washtenaw takes their garbage.
Just so you know, on a bigger scale, Theo Aggerman, the Director of Public Works. Every county in the state of Michigan has to come up with a material management plan. Um, and that includes how to manage recycling, compost, landfill capacity, all those things. So that's underway as we speak. It's not part of this process. But, um, that's for members of the public that once a month, the Material Management Plan Committee for Washtenaw County. Is meeting to talk about those very issues. And I know because we're helping Theo with that project, so.
And I guess my last question is, I know Webster Township is, is watching what we're going to do. So I mean, would it be a positive if we could reach out to Webster? Maybe we could be just like the fire department in an interlocal where, you know, it would make it more cost efficient for a carrier to come out here. Maybe take care of two communities, larger scale of residents. Are we doing that?
That was our intent to start with Linden. They're just not ready to move forward. And I think at that time, we opted to, we're, we're going to be the leaders. And Webster and Linden are going to jump on our backs probably. Good for them because all it does is ultimately bring down the cost of our trash for our residents. But we're, we're a lot farther ahead in the process. And do we delay it for a year to allow them to catch up or do we lead the way? We chose to move forward with the RFP and lead the way. And I have no doubt that Webster and Linden will probably follow, just from initial conversations.
My conversations with Webster, I, I think there's some interest there, but they had turned out. I'm not sure that they will go forward with it until they see how it goes.
Till they see we work.
Dexter Township, like they want to see it working for us.
Or the test case.
Before they, before they want to try it. Because, you know, SIO Township had a very rocky, um, rocky start to theirs. I think people are super hat, my mom was living in SIO Township. She was 80 and she was very confused about all that. And it left and it made a lot of people feel gun shy. I, a lot of truck boards feel gun shy about it. But I think that we have solved for the, we, we, we've learned from their mistakes, I think.
Yeah. And it is going to take dedicated personnel for the first quarter or so. I mean, it just is. You're not going to implement something like this to, you know, just under 3,000 homes. And not think you're going to have phone calls and questions. We're going to. And we have to build that into our plan.
I understand. I've just heard a lot from, you know, going to certain forums, especially with the, the sale of GFL, the priority.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, I, so I have my reservations where, you know, we're making a big decision for the community. And we're saying, you're going to do this or you can opt out of this. And it seems to me that SIO, although a lot of them are doing well, a lot of them aren't. But there's no problem with the billing department. But the customer service department is, is having issues, so that's.
I'll tell you the priority situation, when Priority bought out GFL. The people that got service in Dexter Township, because Dexter Township's been fired twice now by trash companies. And the people that held contracts with GFL as a group for a neighborhood, their service continued. The individual residents did not continue. So Priority in taking over GFL, they honored the contract. So that gives, it shows you the power of a contract. And if we can get a power of a contract with 3,000 homes, well, it won't be 3,000 because we'll have 80% of that. But 2,500 homes or 2,400 homes, that gives you precedent that they're not going to fire you. There's, there's penalties in the, the RFP that they're, in the contract they're signing for. But the only people that got picked up by priority were the people with contracts in our township. The rest got kind of kicked to the curb, which was a painful process for many.
Oh, I was here for the, the GFL catastrophe with, with a whole lot of cans in the parking lot and two dumpsters and.
We get it.
And all that stuff.
And the trash star, we got trashed our way. I mean, it's been a mess in the township, so.
Yeah.
Any additional?
It's not going to be a little painful. It's going to be a little painful, but.
Additional questions or comments about the RFP?
After we receive these RFPs back, are we going to host a couple of more outreach communications with the community?
I think after we get the art, my intent is after the RFPs, tell me if I'm wrong in this thinking. We get the RFP backs, we walk through them, we go through a, a rough selection, we understand. Then absolutely, we have to have, we have to have community outreach. We have to have coffee chats. We have to have educational processes to every, it's not, here's a postcard and off we go. That's not, we need a lot more than that.
That's most important to me, so.
Yeah. But we have, by our thing, we have what, two months to do it? Was that what we built in?
Right, and you've got the public event.
We select in May and we don't go live until August. So it gives us June and July to educate.
Well, but we would have proposals, or, I mean, we would probably start earlier than that, right? With, we would have the information.
We'd pull their information. That's how we start educating the public. It gives us two months to run an educational program.
Yeah. To bring people in and let them ask questions.
Right. Right.
Additional, uh, questions or comments?
Questions, send me an email. If it's not in the RFP now, because it's an exciting 90 pages to read.
I skimmed it through a lot of it.
Can't imagine why.
On a computer, which I do not like.
Pressure or mess.
I just, I just have one thing. I trudged through the 90 pages, um, and riveting. Um, but seriously, I would honestly be surprised if we ended up with a company that could fit every single. Regulation rule, everything they had to follow to be able to cross Ts and dot Is, to be able to make that RFP.
It's an RFP that's been used in other communities, you know, for the gross points all went out together, you know. Um, again, for smaller communities trying to get a bigger number. Um, but if you think there's anything that is, um, onerous, like too much for a company. And that's often where the companies will let us know through the bid process. And they'll say, yeah, we can't do that, you know, not for a community this size or something. So we'll hear that and that will be part of the deliberation and review. So I think, um, you want to make sure you're asking for all the things you want and let them push back. Um, so they've done this. They do this all the time. And you'll see some of these responses are going to be beautifully presented, typed in. Some of them are going to be handwritten by, you know, smaller vendors, but they all know how to do this. Cause that's how most of the communities, you know, um, they put things out to bid and they respond. So this is not new for vendors.
Other questions or comments?
Just it sounds like a lot of hard work has gone into this and I really, really appreciate it.
Matt's done a wonderful job.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Yeah, you've gotten a lot of good support from Theo, but Karen and other, you know, um, township board members that we've been through this a little bit already. Um, so appreciate the work.
We've just gone dormant for a few months. Now we're back alive, pushing.
I see that. Out of curiosity, does anyone ever put, um, um, garbage services to a vote on a ballot? I'm just.
Um, funding often would go to a ballot, you know, um. Counties will often pass a millage to make sure there's funding for household hazardous waste. There, where it pays for their garbage collection. Um, you know, that would be a, um, I'd have to look into it and see whether like voting on a contract. I, I don't know what that precedent is other than like.
Cause we're not financially responsible.
I understand, but I just did want to throw that out there that, um, I believe we will have a special election in May. For, um, Dexter schools. So I, I just, I mean, what an easy way to be able to get communities.
Yeah.
Then vote.
I think the, the survey showed the residents interested. And I'll tell you, it is the number one question that I get asked from residents. If I shake someone's hand, they're asking about trash. It, it's.
I wonder what that's.
The other day, picking up a package that got delivered to the wrong address and I'm getting trash questions. Come on.
I also think, Michelle, if we, if we did look at that, like if we went down that path, we would have to figure out, you know, if there was an instance. I mean, I, I think it could put some really, um, it would make the contract, I think, very hard. Because we would have to, the, the language there, I, it would be a very interesting legal question, I think. Um, because like if, uh, if a vendor, if we selected a vendor, and I'm assuming under what, whatever it's so far, we select a vendor. They are the people we're working with and they completely fail. Um, and we have to get rid of them if we have gone to a vote to select that vendor. Do we actually remove the teeth that we have from the contract because of the length of time it would take to do another? We really have to look into that.
There.
Yeah. I think it's, that's what this, that's what this discussion time is for, is all the.
But if we know, do you know we're doing a special election in May?
I'm pretty positive, yeah.
Because I also wonder about replacing the fire and police millages with a public safety millage.
I'm going to.
Another question.
Yeah, I'm going to bring us, I'm going to bring us back to the, to the RFP before we really end up on a new discussion item. Uh, any other questions or comments on, on the, um.
Send your questions and Matt. Thank you for coming down, Matt.
Oh, you're very welcome. Great to see you all. Congrats on the new election and.
Thank you.
Hope this, uh, works out well for all of you.
Thank you. Thank you for your help. All right, moving on, um, to the next discussion item. Oh, we are done with discussion items because I want to move to action items. Um, staff and Dexter Township Committee reports. Um, those are all in the packet there. Um, I will say, um, as we are, uh, we have reappointed members. And appointed new members to committees, um, I'm doing my best to work through and try to talk to, uh, all of the various members of our committees. That will take me a little while. Um, but for the chairs, we're really going to be pushing for those folks that are members of boards. Um, to be submitting these types of reports so that the board is getting updates, um, on all of the, the different activities that are happening. So thank you to everyone who has submitted, um, their reports here and we'll continue to try to build out this list. Uh, with all the different committees that we have. Are there any questions, um, about the staff and township committee reports? Hearing none, we'll move to board and committee reports. Uh, same thing that's included in the packet. Any questions there? Any questions about the data and performance metrics from the fire department and sheriff's department? All right, uh, we're on to our second call for public comment on non-agenda items. Is there?
We didn't just talk about the check dispersment.
That's the clerk's report.
Did we talk about clerk's report? Did I miss that?
Yeah, that was number nine.
I just have one, one question and I just think it's a, a simple recoding under AccuShred. It's, uh, coded under the GL for maintenance. It's, and it really should be under community engagement. That was the cost. I believe it's the cost of the shredding. It matches dollars of the shredding from the community, so it should be go under community engagement. Just a simple fix.
Um, and.
Into that before I leave.
I actually think, so, um, I actually think it's already been corrected, because I was going through those today. And it was, uh, I believe it was reclassified, but we'll double check. Um, all right, now we're on to call for public comment for non-agend items. Marty?
Oh. It is, it is, so I lucked out. I didn't want to have to fumble that. First of all, I, I apologize. Had I thought of this earlier, as in, you know, sometime prior to tonight. I would have called the supervisor or the clerk and gotten clarification, but just want to make sure before everybody leaves. If anything needs to be done to clarify or straighten something out. That, uh, we are at full strength with the planning commission, so thank you for making the appointments or reappointments to the planning commission tonight. Two of us were pretty straightforward, our terms ended December thirty-first of this year. So Steve and I got reappointed, thank you. Uh, in the case of trustee Abbott, presumably. Former trustee Driscoll would have vacated that position when she was no longer trustee, you appointed trustee Abbott. So that should be pretty seamless, however. Her previous appointment was set to expire, I think, December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. So. Presumably, although it was not clear to me, at least from, from looking at the packet. The appointment that you made tonight of Sean Smith would have been to. Fill the unexpired term of trustee Abbott's. Previous term. Therefore, what I'm building up to is when we have our planning commission meeting on Thursday of this week because of the. Conflicts with Christmas holiday and all that, it was moved. I just want clarification that we are at full strength with the planning commission. And Mr. Smith's appointment was effective immediately to fill the unexpired term of trustee Abbott.
That's correct.
Excellent, thank you.
Isn't he happy about that?
Yeah, it sounded a lot more confusing than it was, but that's one of those things that after the fact sometimes comes up and, oh my gosh, did we. You know, did we do the right thing at the planning commission? So thank you.
And I, I think Marty, to that, to that point, we may have to, um, and we'll be coming back to this anyways, we may have to correct this document for the term ending. Peace, just so that it shows that it is for that, that term.
Little P, I think that as long as that's your intent, that can get corrected in the meeting minutes or. Or clarified, but we'll be good to go on Thursday with everybody. So thank you.
Yes, that was an intent. Thank you for, uh, thank you for catching that. Um, it's a, it's a typo here on the. On the form. Any other public comment on non-agenda items? All right, um, hearing none. We'll continue on in the agenda. Where did I put it? I lost my agenda.
Here's one.
Uh, any other issues, comments, or concerns of board members and staff? Uh, and we'll, uh, just go down the row, so we'll start, uh, trustee Nelson.
Um, the only thing that I think I'd like to request is, I would like to, um. See if we can get minutes or notes or summary from the executive team meetings. We don't. We don't hear from that, and I, I appreciate Lonnie's, uh, statement or supervisor Scott's statement earlier. About requesting people to issue reports for boards they sit on, so we're all sharing the same information. So I guess I. I guess I'm asking, can the executive team put out a summary of their monthly, their weekly? We don't need it weekly, just, you know what I'm saying.
You know, for a year I did that. And not one person paid attention, so I'll be happy to do that again.
Okay.
Yeah, and we are meeting, um, we are, uh, are attempting to meet weekly. Um, we've had, this is with, with holidays and, and frankly, I was out of town for one of the Mondays, uh, so being, but. Um, we are, our intent is to meet weekly. Anything else? Uh, trustee Abbott? Treasurer Mets?
So, I just have something, so being new, um. Just curious about the, the process for payments and expenditures, because those come across my desk. I have to sign any of the checks that go out. Um, I know that we have, you know, the budget, the, the line item, the bucket, if you will, for each one of those. At that point, are any of those like individual line items? Or is it just, oh, this was the whole amount, whatever it was? That's, I, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, is there an amount there that. We just let roll through? Um. I don't know, I.
I don't.
We moved from a line item budget to an activity-based budget last year, so. I mean, in fact, the, the budget. Appropriation approval was really just at the fund level. Which I real, you know, with the, I mean, that's the, that was the resolution that we approved was just at the fund level, so it says. We're gonna have total revenue of this, we're gonna have total expenditure, but I, I assumed that big, that based on the public discussion. You know, based on the discussion in the public hearing, that year one, when I was in office and in the prior years. We were, we were managing at a line item level, so every time we went over at, at the line item level. I would come to the board and ask for a budget variance. But last year, we simplified the budget. We, and went to folded a lot of, of the line items, like all the supply lines and all the supply lines and everything else under general government. And then approved at the bottom line by broader categories, so there's a planning budget, an elections budget, a general government budget. And so generally. I monitor, I, 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 the, the line items that show up in BSNA. Are the basis of the calculation of the, of the budgetary approval, but we're permitting. Variants within those lines as long as we don't exceed at the department level, and if there is gonna be. Uh, if we are gonna overexpend at the department level, then we have to return to the board and ask for a bu- but approval of the budget variance. So, and the, and the one that's at risk, I, I think everybody knows this, that may go over is planning and zoning, and that's because we had an unexpected vacancy and we had to. The backfill at a, uh, with, with contractors that were more expensive, and I don't know at this point if that really will be an over expenditure, but if it is. Then we'll have to come to the board and ask for additional funds. And the, and the revenue, you don't have to, it, that's just a forecast, you don't have to, you don't have to get authority to, to change it.
So if I remember correctly, though, the last. The, the previous board, which most, most of you are here, um, but the previous board gave. Like certain amounts that can be spent without bringing it to the board?
Oh, five thousand. Yeah, here, here, I can't remember what, I, I think that's.
Five hundred.
I thought it was five thousand.
Five, five.
Five thousand.
Five thousand dollars, yeah. So, so it's, it's, if, if the expense, if an individual expense is more than five thousand dollars, like the staff de-expense, it has to come to the full.
Okay, and is that at the discretion of the supervisor of the whole board at that point?
What gets brought to the board or what?
Do you mean if I had a suspense of five thousand dollars, can I authorize it?
No, 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 so if you had one with four thousand nine hundred and ninety.
Yeah, I could authorize it? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah. Authorize something that was.
I would think the supervisor would have to authorize it.
You know, that kind of a thing, I'm just.
I, I mean, uh, uh, the way, the way the process was working under myself, and I think it's changed a little bit, but every invoice would come to me. And I would designate on it the line item under which it's approved to be paid, and I would initial it as. I'm val- basically validating that, that this is an authorized expense. And then it would go to the clerk's office, and the clerk's office would validate that the good and service was received. And so, so the supervisor was authorizing, was, was, was. Was signing off on the fact that the expense was authorized, and the clerk's office was signing off on the fact that the good and service was received. And then the treasurer's office signs. Now, now that process has changed, so the su- so the clerk's office. That now there's a retroactive where the supervisor is looking retroactively at the expenses to. Validate after it's already been assigned to the general ledger and the, and the check has been paid, that it's an authorized expense. Which is not my preference. I wouldn't, I don't prefer it that way, because then you've paid the, the, the entity. And if it was not actually an authorized expense, then you have to collect it from them, so, but she does, she does.
Actually not paying it. I'm, I'm, I am assessing the GL, and then I am having, I'm working with the supervisor.
Oh, to have him look.
Yeah, I, I believe I review them before they're sent to be paid still.
Okay.
It's just the.
It's just a good practice for the supervisor and the clerk to.
So, so the different functions are, you know, cash handling and general ledger is the clerk. Um, dis- dispersment and, and revenue collection is the treasurer. And authorization is by the full board as managed by the supervisor, data presented by the supervisor and then managed day-to-day by the supervisor. And that's the separation of duties, that's, that's kind of fundamental to township operation. And I'm glad to hear that you guys didn't, I was a little feeling like I had to be more vigilant in reviewing this stuff, but I'm, but knowing that you're looking at it before the payment is made, I feel more comfortable.
Lonnie, I forgot one thing, if I can.
Yeah, hold on, is.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No, I'm all set. I just, that threshold was fine, like, no, you were shaking your head no, though, like, if something was forty-five hundred dollars.
If I was doing a project and it was forty-five hundred dollars, I by no means would.
Okay.
Do that without.
Right, right, I mean, that's.
Supervisor authorization, yeah.
I guess the follow-up to that is, how often can we hit that, oh, there was some, something that needed to be done, it was. Fifty-four hundred dollars, so yes, it would still have to come to the board. But is that, if anything is below that limit, is that per month? Per, like, is there a limit on it?
Well, so I should say the routine recurring expenses, so like. Payroll is the biggest example of that, and our contractors, the assessor, our, our accountant, you know, we, we pay them cumula- cumulatively. More than five thousand dollars, but because they're routine recurring expenses, they don't have to return to the board. It's only, it's only one-off expenses that exceed five thousand dollars that have to come to the board for approval. So anything routine, li- like the assessor, we pay six thousand dollars a month as a con- he's a contractor, we pay him, I think it's six thousand dollars a month. We, we don't come to the board every month and say, can we pay the assessor? We've been paying him for ten years, six thousand dollars.
But I think, just, a- and maybe I'm getting your question wrong, but I think this is, uh, so like, I couldn't just, even though it'd be under five thousand dollars. I would, I couldn't just go.
Spend it.
Buy a new computer. If it weren't something that was already authorized by the full board. Like if it weren't a line item full, I, i- is that?
Yeah, okay, yeah, I would just, I, and, and I was also curious like how often a, an expense like that. Could be incurred if it fell below the limit and it fell into one of the buckets. Is there a limit to that?
We don't have those expenses really, we don't have that kind.
Yeah, it's pretty, the, the. It's, you'll, you'll see, I mean, the, the expenses are pretty routine for the most part. The special expenses tend to be the ones out of the capital fund. Um, and, you know, those are.
If that was in play, Laura wouldn't have had to come to the board to get thirty-five hundred dollars for FOS.
Yep.
You know what I mean? Because it's under the five thousand, it's still. A board approval.
Okay.
Okay. This is, this is great, but going forward. Maybe we should lower that limit, and the only reason I say that. Is, for instance, our volunteer appreciation party, which I am all for the celebration of our volunteers. And I was grateful that the election workers were invited as well, because they are paid, but it's a huge. And they are paid very. Yeah, they might get their one or two hundred dollar check for a huge, huge service, um, to the township and for our democracy, so, but. It would be nice to know. You know, when we have these events, if we continue to have them. Okay, there's gonna be food involved, this is how much that food is. Okay, there's gonna be, you know, a party favor, whatever you want to call it. This is how much that is. That would make me feel better going forward versus just having. You know, let's say, for instance, the Flagstar credit card was utilized. Okay, well, here's this transaction on here, but it's not necessarily on the check dispersment. If, does that make sense? Just to have that more transparent communication when we do have to purchase things, because even though you had. The five thousand dollar expenditure, and we did purchase two of the voting booths. I still was, it made me a little bit anxious, and I wanted to have a special meeting. For the whole board to be able to order those voting booths.
Yeah, well, I, I think what, what we could do is we could make a separate line item for the. Holiday appreciation event. Because what we have is the, the community, I would say that the community enrichment budget, that's a.
Engagement, yeah.
I mean, that's a big, that's a big lump sum budget that includes, that, that we kind of created as a board, and it doesn't have the nuance that the other budgets have. So it might make sense for this proposed budget in January, break the community engagement budget down a little more by line, so we could have. Uh, cleanup day, um.
Yeah.
Um, a park pass program and, you know. Whatever outreach events.
Coffee chat, yeah.
I just want to be a little more transparent.
Was that pretty, was that your question?
I think part of that is.
Well, that's not what I'm hearing, I think.
There hasn't been a debrief of it, it's like I wrote a debrief of cleanup day. It takes a while to get all that together to write the debrief of what the actual expenses were. We operate within the budget, but. And here's the final debrief of what happens.
But community engagement is where we have a bunch of programs operating under a single big line item of a hundred thousand dollars or whatever, and so it is, it is less transparent. And I, I can see value in making and breaking out those.
We can break out ones.
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
For the, for, you know, for the January.
And perfect timing, because we're pulling everything together for our January, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just, it can make people anxious seeing a really large line. Line item with a, a lot of money in it, and where is it going? What is it being used for?
Yeah.
Now, when you think of a park pass, well, of course, that expenditure is gonna be a large, but.
I was thinking, what are they? They're cleanup day, they're the, the holiday, the event, the voluntary event. There are the park pass, there are coffee chats, there's probably postage.
Mailings, well, I think a lot of it is mailings, and I, I think one of the reasons the postage budget under general government is heading for over expenditure is because. We've done a fair number of mailings that are really community engagement, but the postage all gets billed to general government.
Yeah, there should be a postage in community engagement.
That would be an improvement we could make to the budget.
So if anyone, um, I'm gonna, I, I did not yet, but I've.
We can talk.
Got a good memory, and we now have, we now have YouTube.
Yeah.
Can watch it all again. Um, we've always had live streams, but I, I can watch it on YouTube. I, uh, so just on that note, if folks, if there are other things that pop to mind in that, in that category, send them to me. And as we prepare for the January meeting with, with the budget, we'll, we'll start to break those out.
Movie night.
Movie night, that's one of those, yeah. Um, all right, anything else?
No.
Um, so trustee Nelson?
I was just hoping that you could give an update on the Metro Park Pass and what's happening in the next week.
Yes.
Because it's.
Yes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do that when I get to me.
Yeah, that's what I was hoping.
All right, uh. Do you have anything else?
I do have an ask of the board, I am. And this is part of one of our meetings that, um, um, the executives have. So I know this has been a controversial, um, thing in the past, but I am asking on behalf of Recycling Solutions Dexter. Um, currently, that volunteer group is hauling styrofoam weekly to Mason. It is starting to get icy, uh, well, I guess not yet, but. January and February, the weather could be inclement. So I had a conversation with both supervisor Scott and treasurer Mets, bless you, whoever that was. And, um, in regards to asking if Dart is willing to bring down a trailer for those two months. Pick it up once a month, where that trailer will be full of styrofoam, there would be no styrofoam here, but it would be. Appreciated if we could have a location just to drop that semi-trailer. Um, I did ask our planning and zoning, both Megan and Michael. And, um, both of them stated that they didn't believe it's. They didn't see an issue with it, nor would I need to pull a permit, because that was another question. Um, and because we already have recycling that people are doing weekly, all I'm asking is to have a trailer just to make. It, it would just make our safety a bit more.
You mean to have a trailer in the.
Yes, parked over, out of the way, there are no. Yes, parked over, out of the way, there are no elections, there's no cleanup days, I do not anticipate, you know, a hundred people be paying their taxes daily, um, so it's just a question to the board, if not, um, I'm sure the school would not have a problem, but just because it's also on the individuals that are driving the trailer to Mason, it's, it's on the way and we passed Dexter Township. There would, like I said, there would be no collection here, it would be, just be a semi-trailer that would be parked off in the back corner for the months of January and February, just for inclement weather.
So it wouldn't be collected here, it would just be dropped here.
Correct, and that would give us the opportunity to fill that trailer, um, less wear and tear on the roads, until we can find a more permanent home, which we are working on currently.
So, so the styrofoam in it would be put in there by?
The, um, the volunteers of Recycling Solutions Dexter. And it's a much larger trailer, so of course, if we are, as we say, good stewards to Dexter Township environmentally, you know, you have one semi-trailer that would come down here, they would pick it up monthly, because it would be full within a month, and that's wear and tear with, let's say, a big diesel truck toting a trailer every single week up to Mason. One truck would come down, pick it up, drop off another clean, empty truck, and pick that up, and then come March, I don't anticipate any, um, any weather issues, hopefully not.
Where does Recycling Solutions, um, get their styrofoam?
Oh, well, we probably have about two hundred, maybe more, I actually have a, or there's a volunteer here.
Is that your, your group that you're, oh, okay, okay, and then are there others too? Is there a school involved? I mean, is there more than one co- styrofoam collection?
No, there's just one, but I mean, we have the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, the, the school.
They're all working with you.
Okay. And, but, we've been, um, we were reached out by, um, Carrie Bushaw, who owns the Dexter Mill, she's amazing, and, um, this will be the third year.
Okay, so you're basically, this is storage until it's full, and then it gets transported?
Correct.
Okay.
Usually, we drive it to Mason weekly, because the trailer is overfull, sometimes we have to take two trips. And right now, this is all, of course, a volunteer-coordinated effort with eighteen volunteers, um, that rotate. Um, and it's just, I mean, members of Dexter Township, the city of Dexter, SIO, they come from Chelsea, they come from Bridgewater, I mean, it's, it's unbelievable, the amount of people that do utilize it, and it's just a really nice community service, but like I said, it just, it would keep, um, you know, the drivers. It, it's just a safety perspective, and we have a very large parking lot in the community. You know, they value not throwing it in the garbage, which I highly doubt that our, if we have our garbage trucks, um, uh, waste company, one thing, two things they don't accept, glass and styrofoam, so. And the WWRA absolutely appreciates it too, because it's keeping it out of the green bins. Not here to advocate for it, I'm just here to ask if the Board of Trustees would consider allowing a empty semi-trailer off to the side just for collection purposes, that it wouldn't be collected on the premises, it would just be a storage container.
Storage.
And the executive committee endorse, endorse that? You guys said that was okay.
I mean, we, I, I don't know that we made a decision, the decision that we talked about was bringing it to everybody. But yeah.
My issue is not the trailer, my issue is a bigger precedent, a bigger policy issue, here I am talking policy, the non-policy person. Um, is, do we set the precedent to use township resources for private projects? And I appreciate the private project, and I appreciate the winter, and that you don't have Dart moving trailers during the winter, and that some styrofoam collection stops during the winter because of that, but are we properly using township resources for projects outside of the township, is what I'm asked, is what, it's just a big, you know, I'm looking at the bigger policy, I mean, are we going to have somebody else come in and say, oh, I've got this project, and I'm running this project, and I want to use yada, yada, yada of the township, and are we opening a door that we have to prove that? I don't know, that's my first thought.
Other thoughts? Anybody want to share? I, I mean, I don't, uh, just personally speaking, I don't personally mind, um, as long as it's, you know, term limited, I do think we would probably, we would, we would probably get some questions, uh, from residents about a, a semi-trailer being parked there, um, as storage, so I think we should just, if it were something we were going to do, we'd want to be prepared for that.
Do we have a liability issue on the trailer?
That's, that's the other question, is if, yeah, or if, like, someone backed into it, or, I think there's, there are some of those questions I would have, but as, as a general, uh, as a general sense, I mean, I don't.
Which that's understandable, but someone could back into my car on private property.
They could. I'm just, you're usually here on township pro- business, well, you know, I, it's just, it's an issue, I think it would have to have liability.
I think you could call the insurance company and ask Dr. and ask them, you know, and ask if there's any.
Yeah, they have to sign off.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just, I think, I think we.
I mean, if it's an issue, like I said, the school will.
What is the school? What school? What are you talking about? What school?
This school is, is very, they have. Dexter.
Dexter High or Dexter?
I'm, I mean, we already work, um, we educate yearly with Wiley. I mean, the, the schools have a lot of room, and I was going.
Oh, are you going to go to school and ask if you can put it out of school? Oh, okay.
But I mean, I was just saying, we just have a large parking.
Yeah.
You know, it doesn't need to be dragged out into a big thing, I just, I just thought I would approach the board. Just, we do cleanup days, we do wonderful things for the community, this would just be another way to just, uh, I guess, support an entity that I assume we all value with our environmental stewardship, that we really, um.
And I, I was going to say, so I, I, I do think it's consistent with our other, you know, with our cleanup day and our value on environmental stewardship. I agree with you, Lonnie, as long as it's term limited, I.
What does term limited mean?
Like, li- like, only January and February? I don't, I don't necessarily want a semi-truck there for a year.
And you're looking for a permanent home for it, and, and in the meanwhile, you, you want to find a place to park it, it's a, it's a, it's a operation that's consistent with our, I mean, our strategic plan is obsolete now, but I still manage to it, and so it's consistent with our strategic planning values and some of our other programs. So I don't, and I don't view it as problematic, because there isn't going to be a big event here that consumes parking. Um, so I don't, I don't, I don't object to it, but I think it's probably a good idea to call Decker and just make sure there's some reason that we should be worried about.
And I can contact Art as well.
You know, they're so nice, I mean, that, you know, they, they got guys at Decker, so, and I think they're probably going to say so.
Are there any other, I know we've, we've only heard from a few, are there any other folks that want to speak on the issue? That feel?
Go ahead. I mean, I don't really have anything to add, except that I would, I'm all for it, as long as there's no liability to the township. And by that, I mean, insurance or.
And I would say there's no collection here, let's not set a precedent that we start, you know, bags start showing up.
Yeah.
I mean, if anything, I mean.
You know how that goes.
Obviously.
And it, well, you know what, it was all about the way it was, was brought, it was brought quickly, but, I mean, there's just a really good thing going, I mean, no materials ever left at the mill. You know, now we have just a, a, a large volunteer, I mean, staff, you might as well say, and I, I mean, it's a really beautiful thing, and it's, 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 you know, community engagement on a volunteer level.
Well, and if bags were left, I mean, I know you're joking, I know you mean, you're serious about that, but I feel like Michelle's here often enough, and she saw a bag, she'd unlock the truck and throw it in there.
Except for we want to dissuade that.
Can Sam redact that part of the YouTube? No.
I, I feel, I feel supportive of it.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm with kind of what everybody else is saying, as long as we don't have any inherent liability, it's during times when the weather is bad, icy, saving the drives back and forth to Mason. Um, and my guess is, Michelle, is that once the styrofoam was loaded into it, the door shut, so.
And it's locked.
Right, it just shut and locked, so it's not like somebody's going to be like, that big metal box is for styrofoam.
Oh, they'll find us.
Who's going to be, no one living in it.
For like a half door or something like that, somebody looking.
So it sounds like, um, we'll look into liability, that's, that's a big concern, um, but otherwise, sounds like agreement.
Thank you, I, I genuinely appreciate it.
Any other issues, comments, or concerns?
No.
All right, Laura?
No.
Karen?
Oh, um, Lonnie, well done.
Yeah.
That went into this meeting, and, um, to Sam too, um, and just for future business, a big fan of strategic planning, and would love to repress our strategic plan for this, um, for this.
Or.
Yep. So, I would like that to go into the future business upper.
I think that's a great idea. Um, all right, so I have a, a quick update, um, Karen brought this up a little bit. Um, want to give everyone an update on the newsletter that went out, and also Park Pass, um, program. So our newsletter, um, are, was supposed to be one of the final reminders of the Park Pass, uh, deadline. It was sent to the printer, and I'm going to try to get these, I'm going to look at Sam as I get these dates probably incorrect, uh, on December third.
That's when it mailed out.
That was when it was.
Went to them in November.
In November, it went to the printer in November, it was taken to the mailhouse December third. Um, and we found out yesterday that it was trapped at a distribution center in Detroit, uh, for thirteen day, at a USPS distribution center in Detroit, um, for thirteen days. The mail vendor that we use tracked him down, uh, he said that in the time that he's been doing this for thirty years, this has happened three times, um, and was very apologetic, but that means that our residents received these newsletters, um, after the deadline for the Park Pass. So, um, what we've, uh, done is we, we did reopen the, the application, um, for the Park passes, for those who just received their newsletter. Um, that application, and we posted online, I believe, today, um, just saying that that application is open until Sunday. Um, anyone who had previously requested their passes prior to, uh, the deadline, which was on the fifteenth, um, that first batch will be mailed out, um, here soon, so th- those are going to go out as quickly as we can get them out in the mail to folks. Anyone who is requesting through Sunday, uh, will go out in a second batch at the beginning of the year, and that is just a processing issue, um, and so we, we will still honor for those folks who, who may have missed uh, the initial outreach. I do want to say, um, there were several pieces of outreach about the Park passes, there was a separate mailer sent, there were several in-the-loop notices sent. It's been posted online, um, but we do understand, um, that the newsletter was, was meant to be the final reminder. So we, we opted to, um, to allow for those last few folks, uh, to make those requests, and they will simply get their passes slightly later. Um, so that's a big update. Um, the, the mail vendor was, was very apologetic, um, but I actually appreciate that he was able to track it down and be able to tell us exactly what happened. Um, I still don't know why it was trapped at a distribution center, but, um, we apologize. Uh, I apologize to, to any of the residents, I know that there was a little bit of, um, social media anger today over getting that and, and not having the deadline, um, and so we're trying to make that right, um, but we will, um, we will get those out as quick as we can.
I think, I think I will go home and blow out and in the loop on just that topic.
Mm-hmm.
So people get it.
That's a good idea.
Squelch some of it, um, and then release the other thing later, but just to give until December twenty-second.
And I, oh, go ahead.
I was going to just say Sam's, Sam's written a, a PSA about it.
Yeah.
And I, I just want to say thank you to Sam, uh, who actually is the one who had heard from a few residents that they had not received it, um, their newsletters, and looked into it, and tracked down all of this information to figure out what was going on, um, so that we, so that we did have an answer, um, for the residents, so a, a big thank you to Sam for spending so much time doing that. Um, any questions about any of that? Um, last, uh, and these are a couple of things, um, that are in my report, we are gearing up, we talked about this a little bit, gearing up for the next budget. If you have ideas, thoughts, please send them to me, um, I'm going to try to make our, the changes, uh, to our budget document, um, as we prepare for January. I did include in my report the dates, so we will have our, um, budget workshops, our budget hearings, um, all those things are laid out so that we know the dates for those, um, as that's some, some important items coming up. Um, and just wanted to say, um, thank you to everybody, it has been a, a whirlwind. Uh, I know Don left, um, but drinking from a fire hose, um, is probably how I would describe, uh, the transition. So thank you to anyone, uh, who has come in, there's been a couple residents, um, that I have watched process, um, and, uh, for things like getting permits, or paying their taxes, trying to learn all of the different, uh, roles that everyone on the staff are, are doing, and so, uh, thank you to those few residents who had extra patience as, uh, Michelle and Sam, um, showed me how to do those things. Uh, it, just in case, um, we have to come out and, and perform those duties for folks as well, so, uh, it's been a lot of fun. Um, I've appreciated meeting folks, um, and, uh, am really thankful, as I said in the, the supervisor's report, um, to have been able to step into, um, a really, um, organized, uh, office, and with lots of information. Um, and I also, uh, just want to thank everyone who volunteered as we did our, um, the short-term rental committee, um, we haven't talked about that, um, but we got that named, and they will have their first meeting this Friday. Um, and anyone who volunteered for all of our committees as we did, um, board assignments. So thank you. Anyone else? Other issues, comments, or concerns by board members or staff? Janice, Sam? All right, uh, with no further business, we will adjourn at seven forty-seven.